Bonjour tout le monde, bienvenue. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for joining us today. I would like to call the meeting to order. And for those who are able, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Thank you, merci. As we begin our meeting today and on behalf of Ottawa City Council, I want to acknowledge that Ottawa is built on unceded Anishnaabe Algonquin territory. The peoples of the Anishnaabe Algonquin Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The city of Ottawa honors the people and land of the Anishnaabe Algonquin Nation, and honors all First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples, and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. I'm going to move to the podium now for a special presentation.
Nous avons une présentation toute spéciale ce matin en vue de souvenirs.
We have a very special presentation today to recognize the acts of two very courageous young persons. They composed, I mean, they dialed in 911.
Brockington, Chair of the Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee, to join me for this special presentation. And we have two very special guests who are with us this morning. Everybody is very happy to see you this morning, and we're looking forward to recognizing your courage in the face of very difficult circumstances. So please join me in welcoming the two recipients of this year's Children's 911 Awards. They are Drake McKenzie, who is 10 years old, and Miriam Muha-Jer, who is 13. I'm also very pleased to welcome both of their very proud families today. And I want to thank the leaders of our emergency services and the 911 dispatchers who have joined us for this presentation. I want to recognize Kim Ayo, the General Manager of Emergency and Protective Services, Pierre Poiret, Chief of Ottawa Paramedic Service, and Paul Hutt, Chief of Ottawa Fire Services. I also want to thank Sandy McDonald for joining us today. Sandy is the Regional Director for Community Affairs with Bell. And I want to thank Bell for being such a valued sponsor of the Children 911 Awards. So the awards are presented annually by the city of Ottawa to recognize children 12 years of age or younger who have used the 911 system effectively in emergencies. Nominations are received throughout the year from various partner agencies and then reviewed by a selection group.
These prizes are, awards are remit every single year throughout the year to recognize the work of children 12 years of age and younger who have used a 911 system effectively in case of an emergency.
An emergency is a harrowing situation for any of us. Nobody wants to be in a situation of having to call 911. But think about what that's like for a young person in particular. Today, we are focused on these two courageous and quick-thinking young Ottawa residents who took appropriate action by calling 911. Drake and Miriam both did just that and were proud to recognize them for their proper use of the 911 system. Both of you did exactly the right thing under very challenging circumstances, and we are all thankful for your actions. So I'm happy to present each of you with a 911, with a Children's 911 Award certificate. Miriam, I'll start with you. Okay? Drake, this one's for you. Let's hear it once again for Drake and Miriam. All right. Thank you once again to Drake and Miriam and their families and the leaders of our emergency services. I will now ask the deputy clerk to please do the roll call.
Councillor Luloff.
Is that?
Councillor Dudas.
You see.
Councillor Hill.
Present.
Councillor Currie.
Here.
Councillor Kelly.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Devine.
Here.
Councillor Bradley.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Councillor Plant.
You see.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor Troster.
Here.
Councillor Leeper.
Good morning.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Morning.
Councillor Carr. Councillor Kits.
Here.
Councillor DeRus.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
Here.
Councillor DeRush. Councillor Hubley. Councillor Lowe. Mayor Sutcliffe.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Confirmation of minutes from the council meeting on April 26th. Are those minutes confirmed? Yes? Okay. Any declarations of interest? Item seven and eight communications received in response to inquiries. I'll just note those on the agenda. We did receive regrets from Councillor Carr for today, and I know that Councillor Lowe is, is traveling back to Ottawa today and may be able to join us virtually. All right, item 10, motion to introduce reports. Councillor Menard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, that the report from Agricultural and Rural Affairs Report III, Environment and Climate Change Committee Report IIIA, Finance and Corporate Services Committee Report IV, Light Rail Subcommittee Report III, Planning and Housing Committee Report VIII, Transportation Committee Report V, and the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of April 26, 2023 Be Received and Considered, and Council Receive and Consider the Built Heritage Committee Report V Pursuant to Subsection 35.7 of the Procedure Bylaw.
Thank you, Councillor Menard. Is that carried? All right, item 11 is Built Heritage Committee Report V. Is, is that carried? Item 12 is the Environment and Climate Change Committee Report. 12.1 is the High Performance Development Standards, and I know there's a motion related to that, so we'll hold that. Item 13 is Finance and Corporate Services Committee. Item 13.1 is the 2021 and 2022 Lansdowne Annual Report. Is that received? Item 13.2 is the Ottawa Nightlife Economy Action Plan. I know Councillor Troster has a motion for that, which, if there isn't much discussion about, we can deal with quickly now if everybody's good with that. Did you want to share your motion? Yes, Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes, I wanted to make comments because I wasn't able to make some committee.
Okay, well, we can hold that then. We'll, we'll hold it and do the motion later. Okay? Item 13.3 Declaration of Surplus Land for 3169 and 3179 Conroy Road and Transfer to Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation as the committee's recommendations carried. Item 13.4 is a motion from Councillor Luloff regarding the CIP application by Trim Works Development Limited for 1280 Trim Road. Is that recommendation carried? Item 14 is the Light Rail Subcommittee. At 14.1, the Action Plan Response to the Public Inquiry Recommendations. Is that carried? Item 15, Planning and Housing Committee. Item 15.1 is the zoning bylaw amendment for 15 Large Street. Is that recommendation carried? Item 15.2 is the zoning bylaw amendment for 377 and 381 Winona Avenue. Is that carried? Item 15.3 is the site, is a motion on the site plan control application for 4 Campbell Reed Court. Is that carried? Item 16, the Transportation Committee Report. Item 16.1 is the Barhaven Light Rail Environmental Assessment Study. Is that carried?
Dissent, Mr. Mayor. Counselor DeRus.
Okay. You're dissenting rather than asking for it to be held?
Yeah, just a second.
Dissent? Okay. Thank you. But item 16.2 is the Processing Centre for the Automated Speed Enforcement. Is that carried?
Dissent, Mr. Mayor.
Dissent again from Councillor DeRus.
Thank you.
Item 16.3 is Speed Reduction on March Road from Tarran Road to Carling Avenue. Is that carried? Item 16.4 is the Sidewalk Design Guidelines. Is that carried? And then item 17 is the Bulk Consent Agenda. There were no requests to lift items from the Bulk Consent Agenda, so is that, is that carried? Okay. So let's go back to the item 12, which is item 12.1, the High Performance Development Standard Update for 2023. And I know that Councillor Hill, you have a motion seconded by Councillor DeRus.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read it out. Whereas the staff report entitled High Performance Development Standard Update 2023 was approved by the Environment and Climate Change Committee on April 18, 2023. And whereas at the time of approval, staff recommended the item proceed to the City Council Meeting of May 10, 2023 to coincide with the consideration of an upcoming staff report entitled Build 109 Implementation Update Report. And whereas the province has advised that potential provincial directions impacting building energy efficiency and green development standards are to be anticipated to occur in the summer of 2023, along with accompanying changes to the Ontario Building Code. And whereas the committee heard concerns with respect to the implementation of High Performance Development Standards, HPDS, ahead of provincial changes to the building code, as well as concerns related to the other components of the implementation plan, including third-party review, community energy plans, CEP, and HPDS criteria to be addressed as part of a site plan control approval. Therefore, be it resolved, the council refer the recommendations on High Performance Development Standards as outlined in said report back to staff and direct staff to bring forward an updated report to committee following the release of the Ontario Government's guidance on this issue expected in the summer of 2023, with recommendations for revised phasing timings, resource requirements, and associated amendments to the Site Plan Control Bylaw by no later than Q1 2024. And be it further resolved that staff be directed to include a review of resources required to conduct timely internal review of energy model and community energy plan submissions in place of a third-party reviewer for submissions associated with site plan control and plan of subdivision applications. Two, to provide clarification in the associated terms of reference for a community energy plan, for a plan of subdivision that a letter of intent is required at the submission of an application and is to indicate the applicant's proposed means of considering energy efficiency within a future community, and that this information is considered to be preliminary and to best information available, which will be subject to revision and validation through submission of a CEP or equivalent certification and labeling program as a condition of approval. And three, further review of the proposed site plan control amendments to enact HPDS within the Site Plan Control Bylaw alongside changes to the bylaw arising from Bill 23 and changes that may result from the proposed Planning Act amendments currently under consideration through Bill 97, and consider revisions to respond to concerns identified at the 18 April 2023 Environment and Climate Change Committee Meeting. Mr. Mayor, this, this is really about process and alignment and about balancing our city priorities. This is not trying to undermine the intent of improving our green standards for building codes. This is simply a timing issue and a process issue. We, as a city, have declared that building houses is a priority to us. We've got a pledge that says that over the next decade, we're looking to build 151,000 new units. In order to do that, we need to make sure that the processes that we have from a development perspective are as aligned as possible. In fact, one of the, one of the three key actions to meet that pledge specifically speaks to streamlining our governance and approvals processes to move from concept to construction faster and to make delivery of housing opportunities our focus across the corporation. This morning, I read in the Ottawa Citizen, similarly, just across the river in Quebec, property owner study says that Quebec needs 130,000 more homes by 2031, and the government is calling for an easing of housing regulations as a way to deal with the housing crisis. The concern that I have with the High Performance Development Standards as they're currently written is twofold. First off, we do know that the government, the provincial government, as stated by the letter that we received from the Minister of Housing on April, or sorry, on February the 18th, indicates that this summer, we will be seeing coordination, but also direction coming to talk about green standards for the building code. It just makes sense to me that instead of moving ahead of them independently as a municipality, that we would wait, see what those building codes requirements are going to look like, and then we coordinate ourselves so that we're aligned with provincial government on that topic so that we can continue the process of improving our quality building standards. I know that right now, industry best practice is improving, and they're doing that in some ways with, with or without elements of this regulation. Different municipalities have, have implemented different programs. I know that in Toronto, they, they took an approach back in 2008. We're 15 years behind that. I acknowledge that. But my comment would be, if we wait three or four more months, perhaps we can do this in a more synchronized manner, and I think that balancing our city priorities is important. As my grade 10 teacher back in accounting told me, you can pick three, two out of three things, either time, price point, or quality. And in this case, we're stressing that. That's all.
Thank you, Councillor Hill. So we'll discuss and vote on this motion first. Councillor DeRus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councillor Hill for moving that motion. I know we've been working on this for a while. And I think it's a good compromise. Councillor Hill highlighted the importance of this motion, and then we're working already closely with our, with the province to making sure they're doing the work, they're implementing. And my comment also, as of some conversation happened yesterday, if we don't like what the province are proposing, then at that time, let's do the work and spend the money in. Also, we're talking about, we keep talking about affordability, and that's, let's wait on what the province comes with, and, and then we'll implement what we need to do to making sure we have a green energy build on. So I'm not going to drag this lot, but I think it's, I urge my colleague to support this, to see what the province is going to come up with, and it's coming in the summer. It's not, we're asking for a year. And I think that will be great compromise. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the work that's been happening behind the scene to support that motion.
Thank you, Councillor DeRus. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning to you. My question is for staff because I, I just want to seek their clarification on their position. This came through committee. My understanding is staff were supportive of the original timelines for this to be approved by committee and council and to proceed forward. Staff knew and continues to know that the province may release additional direction or guidance on this matter at some point later this year. But can staff clarify that their original position remains? That is, they believe council should pass the recommendations coming out of committee today?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. To the councillor's question, yes, staff stand by its original recommendations and do support the, the recommendations and the approach detailed in the committee report.
And if council were to approve Councillor Hill's motion today, what are the real impacts that we would see on housing building standards here in Ottawa? What, what happens?
Well, certainly, Mr. Mayor, to the question, there would be, you know, a delay in implementing the High Performance Development Standards. We've, we've already had a delay through the official plan approval process. So there would be a delay, you know, short term, if it's Q1. It really depends on, on the, the amount of housing that would come forward in that time. There would be an impact, but it's very difficult to quantify at this point.
How do you address the concern, given that your recommendation is for us to retain the, the existing timelines that go with the, the recommendation that was approved by committee? How do you address the concern that, you know, the province might release some pretty substantial changes? We will have just implemented our own building standards, and now we have to go back and make some significant changes. Do you think that holds weight? And should that be considered in our deliberations this morning?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the question. Yes, it's certainly a, a matter of balancing uncertainty at this point, right? We don't know exactly what's coming forward from the province. They've indicated, as Councillor Hill noted, a summer, end of summer timeline. But we don't know when that could be implemented. Quite often, there's a gap in terms of the regu, implementing regulations. So on balance, staff felt that the appropriate approach was to get started. It's a tiered approach. Parts of it are, are still voluntary till, till January of next year to start building that staff capacity and industry familiarity with the process. So that on balance, staff felt that it was appropriate to move forward. We would certainly respond when that additional information in terms of building code changes come forward.
Okay, I appreciate that information. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councillor Brockington. Councillor Troster?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm not supportive of this motion. I serve a rapidly densifying ward, and we often hear that simply adding density will fight climate change. This is partly true, but 45% of Ottawa's emissions come from homes. We have to respond to what's there now, and I know the committee worked very, very hard on this process. Better building standards are much cheaper than retrofits later. There are developers and architects who are pursuing inventive net zero projects, and they're already rising to the challenge, but they're the exception and not the rule. And also, I don't know, many of you maybe have heard the term "energy poverty", which refers to people who can't afford to pay their hydro bills, which is a real issue in my ward. When high-performance building standards are met, it reduces the costs for tenants. So at Ottawa Community Housing's Mosaic Building on Gladstone, tenants pay extremely low energy costs, $15 a year, not a month, a year, because it's a net zero building. This is one of the ways we can actually make it a more affordable city because that passes the savings on to residents and tenants. I just can't see delaying this when staff have already accounted for provincial delays, when council has already approved this in principle, and when Ottawa is 15 years behind Toronto when it comes to these standards. So I would like us to move forward today to approve these really important environmental building standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Troster. Councillor Gower?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I went back to my notes from last year because we did approve this set of standards in April of 2022. And understanding that, that it wouldn't come into full effect or move forward until the official plan was approved. Obviously, the official plan took quite a bit longer than we anticipated to approve. And there are so many benefits to these standards. Mr. Hurwire mentioned preparing the industry for the change that is coming inevitably. It's good for public health. It's good for resiliency of buildings to extreme weather. Healthier tree canopy is, is something this council has been very supportive of. And of course, buildings are the largest source of greenhouse gases. So I'm concerned about any delay that we continue to add to this process. I do understand the province may be introducing their own changes to the building code. I think regardless of what the province comes at, we shouldn't accept that as a baseline. We should be going above and beyond the provincial standards because we are able to as a city. And I do understand the concern about, about regulation, overregulation, or, or reducing the amount of regulations as a concern around the housing crisis. But I don't think weakening the building code or diluting environmental standards is, is the way, the type of regulation that we should be minimizing. I want to get a clear sense, though, from staff. This motion, the first, therefore be it resolved, what does this really mean in terms of number of months? If, we don't, we don't know when the province is going to be implementing these changes, but how soon could staff come back with their recommendations? I guess I'm trying to get a sense of, is this going to be back in front of council in three months, in six months, in nine months, in a year? What, what's realistic in terms of the impact of this motion for having this back in front of council?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. So the, the motion indicates no later than Q1. So in terms of the gap, I guess, between a provincial decision, you're looking at, you know, probably a couple of months before we could come back to committee, two months, I would say, two months after that provincial decision is landed. I'd ask Mr. Wise if he has anything to add.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with Mr. Hurwire. It would take some time for staff to absorb what that might mean. It all depends on the extent of those changes. If those changes are such that they may require revision to the tier-one criteria that council and the committee have passed from last year, then that would be something that we would need to come back with and restructure. If these are changes that are more changes to the procedural mechanisms of the, of how to do and implement the, the HPDS, then those would be things that staff could take care of at the terms of reference level. So it really does depend upon what the province does and the extent to which those changes might occur, and the timing.
Okay, because if it is Q1, Q1 could be pushing to, to March, although I get the sense it might not be that far. But it's at least 18 months after, I think we anticipated these might be implemented when council passes last year. And my other question is, on the motion, the second set of directions to staff under the, therefore be it resolved, can those be accomplished without the first, therefore be it resolved?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was just pulling up the motion just to make sure that I was referencing the right thing. So just with respect to the, the first ones, include the resources. This is, just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, this is the resources question?
Yes.
Yeah. With respect to that, that is something that staff are already considering right now within the package. We are looking at what staff resources might be necessary. The third-party review is intended to provide that opportunity to understand what the new process is for how we understand energy modeling, community energy planning, and understand what is required in terms of the work that is needed to do things. That was to be monitored and was to inform what staff resources would be needed following that. If it is the will of council that staff conduct that analysis upfront prior to Prior to prior to doing that, that that would form a budget pressure submission for the next for the next term.
Okay, thank you. I I at this point of mind, the the second clause, I think these are things worth worth directing staff to review. I'm not convinced yet that delaying to after the provincial guidance comes through is a good idea, but I'll listen to the rest of the discussion today. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gower. Councillor Leaper.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I very bluntly, I believe that this motion is a rear guard action against the implementation of. Green building standards on which the city of Ottawa is very far behind. The results, the outcome of implementing the kind of green building standards that we are contemplating here is going to be able. Is going to be to create housing that is actually more affordable over the total cost of of that housing over the lifespan of it. As long as an owner owns that house. And I want to be really clear that the province has said very explicitly that they. They have contemplated that cities will continue to use section forty one of the Planning Act in order to implement various aspects of green building code. If we take a look at the letter that they sent us, the. The note is, I also wish to clarify, this is coming from the minister's office. I also wish to clarify. That aspects of green standards that are not brought into Ontario's building code, because they do not involve building construction, including green infrastructure. Cool paving, biodiversity, tree plantings, et cetera, will continue to be optional standards. That can be required through municipal bylaw and implemented through site plan control. We need to get moving on those. We're behind on them. The housing that is being created is not as affordable as it could be, because they're not built to these sort of standards. And we're not addressing the climate crisis with which we are faced, as long as we continue to delay implementing green building standards. Colleagues, staff have built in timelines to adjust to whatever the province may do on this issue. In the meantime, it behooves us to continue moving forward to ensure that the housing that we're going to create is more sustainable and more affordable for the long term. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Leaper. Councillor Currie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just want to say that I'm impressed that councillor Hill can remember what his grade ten teacher said. And this is gives me a lot of hope. So. I want to thank Ottawa Community Housing and Hydro Ottawa for weighing in on this. I think that was very helpful. Because I didn't expect anything different from them, really. I just think that we should always consult with them on issues that really affect their operations. And as we know, both organizations were in favor of the of the standards, and really, I think so are all of us. We are all in favor of the standards. It's about just delaying until the province puts theirs forward, and I think that there's a little bit of a strategic advantage to delaying. So. Just to be a hundred percent clear, I agree with every what everyone said in the standard. Component of it. I think that's a great idea, and we should be doing that. But I I don't have a problem with waiting just a little bit to hear what the province has to say and sending them the message that we do actually care what they put forward on. On and I on every issue. May translate into a better working relationship as well. I would note. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Currie. Councillor DeRush.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor, and I thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. I think it gives us an opportunity to pause and to to reflect on what was proposed in the previous council. I don't see our role here. In this term of council to simply rubber stamp the decisions of the previous council. So I'm glad we have this opportunity to pause and. Like many councillors here, I did commit. To to my constituents that we were going to make progress on on housing that's affordable. And when you look at the numbers, they are very, very discouraging. And as a father of four and and a young man who. Is in university, I am not clear on, you know, how he and his family will purchase their first home. And I hear a lot about, you know, the affordability of housing, but you need to get through the front door to 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 start paying a mortgage and start paying those very bills that. May in fact be lower over time. But the challenge right now is you have to get in the front door. So I'm very sensitive in fact that we have some important role here to influence. The price of homes by this by regulating the the supply, both the number and and the quality of homes. And. One of the other areas I'm very concerned about is the 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 bleeding of growth that we're seeing in communities like Carlton Place, like Rockland, like Arnhem Fire. Like Kempville. And I spent a lot of time in Kempville with one of my sons with his hockey team, recently won. Eastern Ontario Championship. Give a plug for them. And people say to me, parents who are from Ottawa, who are also there, say, why can't we build a community like this? It Kempville has everything. It's got schools. It's got. Modern homes. It's got recreational facilities. Why can't our suburban communities look like this? And I think we really have to pay attention to this bleed, because with the hybrid work environment. That, you know, the unions are pressing for, and many colleagues here support that that drive. I think we're going to see a bigger challenge there to keep. The housing growth within the boundaries of the city of Ottawa so that we can then manage. The growth property. So I want to see what the province has to say on this. Again, we made a lot of pledges to build homes and to build them as quickly as possible. Already the site plans circulate, circulate, circulate. And staff are doing their best, but you know, we've got to be move quicker if we're going to sort of address some of the the rising prices that show no relief at this point in time. And again, I made a pledge that we're going to build houses, and that didn't come with a lot of small print, Mr. Mayor, so I'm going to be supporting the delay today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor DeRush. Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to borrow one of councillor Hill's favorite questions. And ask staff if they can comment on what you could you describe for us the perceived risks in delaying this approval, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The challenge that we always have is that we have been suspending this program for some time. It was provided as a policy direction within the official plan. And so staff do have a requirement to, of course, implement the policies and the directions of the official plan. Those HBDS policies were in turn, the implementation of which has been delayed for for the past year pending the approval of the official plan. And. We are also looking at currently within the package that staff recommended to Environment Committee. Delaying the actual requirement to implement energy modeling and community energy plans until January of twenty twenty four. Further to recognize the provincial, the provincial future actions. The. This means as well to that the condition of approval is something that happens at the tail end. Of any development application. So when a site plan application is made, there's a pre-submission. It goes through a condition of approval. That's when the energy model would be required. So that is already being shifted into twenty twenty four. The challenge, of course, is as as we add further timeline shifts, the question then comes down to is when. Will we require an energy model at a site plan level? When will we require a community energy plan at a plan of subdivision level? When will those kick in? And when will those in turn have downstream impacts? On improving energy efficiency of the product that we see built. So in terms of the the risk to the timing and delay, it it really does, as commented before, depend upon. When we bring in place the requirement for expanded energy efficiency requirements for our built environment. And that in turn also reflects the extent of the provincial changes and. What the timing of implementation might subsequently be for staff to come back and provide that new recommendation.
Okay, so I'm hearing that there already has been substantial delays. We are adding an additional risk of potential delays. Can you comment on what the implications might be for construction seasons? And the number of houses, like what kind of construction seasons might be captured in some of these delays? I guess we've already seen two. Can you tell me more there?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of actual construction, as Mr. Wise indicated, a lot of this gets implemented, you know. Post approval or as a condition of subdivision approval. So. It wouldn't be a twenty twenty four issue. It could. Substantially affect twenty twenty five and twenty six and beyond. So. It's going to start impacting and delaying implementation, I would I would suggest next year.
Okay, so I'm just trying to clarify that, in fact, although we are looking at what might appear to be a two and a half month delay, we have implications both reaching back and reaching forward that creates a different perspective on timelines. And if I might bring in a a a different perspective, you know, having worked for a nonprofit housing developer who had to break ground and had to build buildings. The nonprofit housing industry has been working on green standards of practice to cut down on operating costs for years. They've been really advancing that kind of work as as a mechanism of affordability. So I don't. Understand the equivalency of delaying housing starts based on green standards. I think there are other ways of doing it. And we have other actors that are doing it to to bring that affordability forward. I'm concerned also about some of the conflations with red tape specifically for these standards. Can you describe for me where else you are being asked to. Cut red tape within the planning department and where else and when else you will be presenting your solutions to this to council? Because I think there's a few places you're being asked to do this, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, you've been paying attention at some of the briefings. So. We will be bringing a report forward in reports forward in June on the Bill one oh nine and Bill twenty three implications, impacts on our development review processes. Condensing those timelines, as as council members are aware. It's, you know, a sixty and ninety day turnaround, cutting. Pretty much in half what our our historic timelines have been. So there'll be a report. At playing in Housing Committee in June and Council on that very matter.
So it is not your opinion that putting forward this recommendation at this time will in fact impede any of the red tape cutting that you're going to put forward in these other. Presentations and briefings.
That's that's correct. We are we are mandated mandated to implement those provincial changes that have made as of July first. If if we don't meet those timelines, the application fees are refunded, and there's a huge financial. Risk associated with that.
Yeah, so I I'm not convinced that this is the place to defer to solve problems that we're actually trying to address in other in other places. I I I appreciate the the mover wanting to look at how to build housing. I think we all in agreement have said that housing is one of the number one. Strategic priorities for this term of council, but I would argue that in fact also. Climate change resilience and mitigation is going to be another one. And if we think about what is within our control as a city. To address extreme weather, and I will appeal to my council colleagues that have all had very serious extreme weather events in their wards. That if buildings are causing so much GHG emissions, emissions, this might be one of the few places where we could imagine. Creating some future controls for extreme weather events. And 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 we should be looking at what is in our bailiwick as a city. I understand that we are creatures of the province. I absolutely understand that. But we do have the authority, and we did have an official plan process that approved some of this opportunity. And we do have the timeline in place to make amendments, but we are within our own wheelhouse. And this is an opportunity for us to say, yes, we do hold ourselves to this standard, and we will continue to hold ourselves to this standard. I'm concerned about the risk introduced by delaying, because I don't know as a builder whether I want to. Continue waiting in that respect either. I want to know what my pro formas are going to look like for this construction season and for next construction season. So I think that the argument can be cut both ways, and so I would appeal to my council colleagues to consider. That we stand for the high performance standards that we that we've already described and that I I just maintain that the. The equivalency to affordability falls down. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Menard.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thanks to staff on this important work. I'll have a number of questions for staff. The first question is just. What was the consultation process like for you last term and into this term? Who did you consult with stakeholders, industry? Just give us an idea of that.
Mr. Mayor, the consultation process for the high performance development standards has been extensive. The staff last year conducted extensive negotiations and discussions with. Stakeholders from across from the ministry. Of course, consulted quite quite closely with our colleagues in Toronto, who have been working on green development standards since two thousand and eight. Extensive consultations across the board with community associations, residents, industry. This year as well. In the interest of transparency and fairness, we did elect to bring back. The HBDS to open that up for consultations for discussions further with with industry as well. This year. So there has been quite a bit of of discussion.
I'm glad to hear that. Sounds like extensive consultation on this. Just a question to the mover. Councillor Hill, this is coming very late in the day, a delay tactic. I'm just wondering who you. Which public did you consult with to to bring this motion forward after it was consulted with extensively by city staff and a committee?
Sir, just by late in the in the game, this is the first opportunity that I've had to discuss this in council after our committee meeting in the environment. So as you know, we had an extensive discussion at Environment Committee on this, where this did pass six to five. I was one of the folks that was concerned about this, just based on the timeline that we had, you know. Summer twenty three, to me, it's a nice day outside today. We're getting pretty close to that. So I I just don't see the the stress issue here with waiting a few months in order to be aligned with another government department. In that. So I don't see this as being a late in the game opportunity for me. This is the first opportunity that I've had at council to be able to discuss this. Since this went through Planning Committee, sorry, since this went through Environment Committee in the first place.
Yeah, the problem is, I guess, so I don't think you've got support of the public on this. I don't think you've asked them. I think our staff asked them, and they had the support of the public on it, and I think your motion speaks to Q one twenty twenty four, not a few months delay. It could be much longer. It's not a question, councillor Hill. It's not a question. I I think.
No, it was a question, though. So just to respond to that, in terms of consultation with the public, I take this back, councillor, to. The consultation that was done for the affordability issue of the of the of the of life in the city of Ottawa, which I think was the election issue in the last campaign. People are concerned about the the cost to live in this city, and a big part of that is the is the is the housing prices, which this will increase. That is a that is a fact. And and I know that it's your opportunity to to speak to staff on that, but you asked me the question of public consultation.
And I think you haven't consulted, councillor. That's the problem. At this point, you actually haven't.
I'll just jump in. I'll just jump in and just councillor Hill, you'll have a chance to wrap up at the end, unless it's a direct question to the. To the mover of the motion. It's I'll let councillor Menard continue with.
Thanks so much. Thanks so much, Mayor. I think the councillors that are talking about cost of living are ignoring the cost that this saves residents over time, renters and homeowners because of building efficiency. It actually saves more money than it costs. I think any builder will tell you makes more sense to build upfront, to build those costs in. Instead of expensive retrofits later, it's a savings for residents. Let's not pretend it's it's any different. I think questions to legal staff, Mayor. In the letter that we sent back to the province. It seems that legal staff confirmed this was in within municipal authority. If you can just confirm that. That the green design standards proposed in the HBDS are within municipal authority.
Mayor. Obviously, there may be differences from other parties, but the the restrictions that were imposed by Bill twenty three do provide exceptions for things like sustainable design. So it would appear that there is room for the municipality to impose these kinds of requirements, at least under the existing scheme.
Perfect. Thanks so much for that. And I guess a question to staff as well, the. If council passed the HPDS today. Do you feel confident that you could implement potential provincial changes and be able to incorporate those potential provincial changes in the plan? Have you already been planning for that?
And, Mr. Mayor, the staff recommendation from the Environment Committee meeting did recommend that the energy modeling and community energy plans would not kick in as a requirement to their condition approval until January. And that was done to provide the opportunity to reflect upon what changes the province might bring forward. So there there is mechanisms that have been built into that recommendation that flow from Environment Committee.
Fantastic. Thanks so much. I guess, Mayor, I'd surmise that this is not about harmonization in any way, shape or form. It's clear from the arguments we're hearing around the table today. That will happen if we pass the report here today. Harmonization will occur. Staff are telling you that clearly. So if it's about harmonization, it's going to happen. Staff are going to do that. But I guess what it is about is eroding the principle, underpinning these changes. It's political nature, and it's very clearly a delay tactic. It's why several of the be it resolved clauses have actually weakened the HPT HPDS within that motion. It's why the motion speaks to Q one twenty twenty four instead of the summer, which we say they would come to. Why why putting Q one twenty twenty four then? And so I guess instead of. You know, saying let's defer or pretend that this somehow builds favor with the province, who've made it clear its municipal responsibility. We should instead be saying, let's defer to the good work of our staff team, who have consulted extensively on this program and have had approval of the public. And stakeholders on this and have made just for stakeholders over time, have made significant changes for stakeholders already. Let's defer to the good work of our committee and our team here in Ottawa. This is about Ottawa. This is about Ottawa. Let's make sure that we build favor with the residents of our city. Let's build favor with them who overwhelmingly support changes at the build phase, overwhelmingly support that. Because they know it saves them money over time. They know that it reduces emissions at the same time. And let's end up supporting our city on this, the city of Ottawa, who's done extensive work, our staff team that's worked for years on this policy, only to have a last minute delay tactic, which is really about eroding the policy at the end of the day. That's what it is. And so let's not buy into that. That's, I think, cynical politics. Let's pass the good work that our team has done here in Ottawa. They're sitting here in front of you saying, let's pass this now. We'll harmonize the changes that the province brings, which could be a year, could be two years for all we know. That guidance could be two more years, and you lose that time. It could just be guidance with the legislature coming back sometime in the fall, potentially passing some more changes. We're going to come back with building code changes anyway. And I guess to staff as well, we we're coming back on potential changes that we see as the program program unrolls, right? We're going to see the program working, and staff are bringing this back to committee. It's coming back to committee anyway, based on the changes that we're seeing and how it works within that first year. So this is really cynical, this motion. I'm really disappointed, I have to say, in seeing it come forward so late without any consultation with the public whatsoever. We've done our due diligence on this from last term into this term, and we should be voting down that motion and passing the original good work of staff and bring this city into the 21st century when it comes to building standards. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Menard. Councillor Devine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I appreciate and sympathize with the the frustration and passion that my colleague just showed because I I feel similarly that this deferral motion is something that we should be frustrated over. I will not be supporting the deferral motion, and I strongly urge my colleagues to to join all voices who will not be supporting the deferral motion. As the mover of the motion said in his introduction, the industry building standards are shifting. And so the question is, why are they shifting? They're shifting because other jurisdictions are leading and mandating change. They're shifting because other cities are leading. We have an opportunity to join other cities in being leaders on this front, and it feels like we are being once again followers. Worse, it feels like we are falling far behind other cities. Toronto has had these standards in place since 2008. And here we are with a vital opportunity to take action, and we're not just taking a pause. As some of my colleagues have said, we are pumping the brakes. Second, we have zero assurance from the province that they'll be completing their process by summer 2023. Ask me how much faith in the I have in the province lifting up to that timeline, which means that by passing this deferral, we are quite literally risking falling further and further behind from not present in the chamber, but the second of the motion, I heard that this deferral is a good compromise. But a compromise for the sake of what? We have declared a climate emergency. We've identified a problem that needs to be fixed, and these high performance development standards are a clear path forward to fixing this. So who is going to fix this if not us? Because people are demanding that people are going to fix this. They're asking whether or not industry will fix this. They're asking whether or not nonprofit advocacy groups are going to fix this. They're asking whether or not the marketplace is going to fix this. And they're asking those questions, I believe, because they're losing faith that we, government, are going to fix this. Because unfortunately, it feels like we are pausing, pumping the brakes on exerting the political will to fix this. But my colleagues, that's our job. We are mandated to legislate change for the common good. And people will say, my colleagues have already said, that fighting for the sake of affordability is fighting for the common good. But like councillors Leaper and Menard just said, like I heard some other colleagues said, affordability will be taken care of by passing these high performance development standards through the long term savings for both owners and renters, through reduced energy bills, through avoiding costly retrofits, and most importantly, through avoiding the huge cost to municipalities for the impacts of climate change that we are trying to avoid by passing these high performance development standards. And so affordability is being addressed here. But what we won't be taking care of now, if we defer, what we can't afford to take care of later is the cost of the environment. And so as we look at the horizon, we have to stop doing what it feels like we are continuing to do, which is to delay taking effective action to protect our climate time and time again. I think we need to stop doing that. And so I urge my colleagues to act now rather than defer for an uncertain future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Devine. Councillor Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I I'm opposing this passive approach. I I do not want to wait for someone to impose standards on us when we have worked very, very hard to have standards ourselves. And in terms of of cost, let me remind you that Ottawa Community Housing has participated in this high performance development standard. They're developers of affordable housing. They get what costs are. And they're supporting it because they understand that in the new construction projects that Ottawa Community Housing, and I'm very proud to be the chair, we're building performance standards that are resulting in less cost. This is really important. We're doing it now. We're not waiting. This is this is crucial. We also are hearing from Hydro Ottawa, and they get it too, to reduce costs. We're not waiting. We're doing it now. I I don't have faith in in terms of the timeline. I think that we have to go with all the work that we've done. We have to be proactive and take on a responsibility as a municipality and take it seriously and not wait for somebody else to put standards on us. I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Bradley?
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for this discussion. I just have two questions, one for staff and one for the mover of the motion. To staff, has the province or your counterparts at the province expressed concern with us implementing these standards now? Have they asked us to delay, to wait till they come forward with their recommendation?
Thank you for the question. No, we have not obviously consulted with the the minister's office, but ministry staff have actually encouraged the city to proceed.
Sorry, the province has encouraged the city to proceed with implementing today? They've asked for the delay? That's interesting. I guess to the mover, my question is, so if the province doesn't come back by summer of 2023, which they've given us no indication that that's a definite, is your intent to delay until it takes them to come back? Or regardless if they come back with, you know, their standards, are you prepared to have staff bring this back in Q1 of 2024? So I just it's it's the intent here. Is it to delay until they come forward, which could be the summer, could be a year, could be two years? Or is it just to give if if they come forward, if they don't come forward by 2023, could we still move forward in Q1?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So so there is a backstop that's baked into that motion, which basically says Q Q1 2024, we're going to we're going to get it back. But what I would take from the Minister Clarke's letter to the city, which specifically says to ensure these matters are understood, the ministry plans to update its onsite site plan guidance to reflect green building standards early 23, and this will be achieved through an interim building code amendment by the summer of 2023. So I acknowledge that there's a lot of discussion about it may be well into the future and such, but that is what the minister himself has said.
Okay, I guess thank you for that, councillor Hill. To our legal staff, is the motion worded in such a way that if the province doesn't come forward with their standards ahead of Q1 of 2024, could this report come back?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, my understanding of the motion is that regardless of what happens at the provincial level, staff would return with a report no later than Q1 2024.
I appreciate that clarification. I'm not going to be supporting deferral. In fact, I think it was Mr. Herwire's comments that said the province is encouraging us to move forward now on these standards. Give us gives us all the direction that we should need as a council to move forward today. So I encourage my colleagues to not support deferral and to support the recommendations as presented by staff. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bradley. I'll just add as a as a point of information, just as a follow up to what councillor Bradley asked and spoke of. I did receive communication from the Minister of Housing and Municipal Affairs asking asking me to hang on, so to wait. So I'm not sure what communication was received from ministry staff, but the the minister himself requested of me that we wait until the provincial guidelines were in place before we proceeded. So I'm just adding that as a point of information.
Okay, so as a point of order, then, can you circulate that to council if it hasn't been circulated?
It wasn't in writing. So I can put it in writing, but it wasn't it wasn't it wasn't communicated to me in writing.
Okay, I'd appreciate if you could put that in writing to council.
Yep. Councillor Tierney?
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. Herwire, how long have you worked for the city?
At the risk of sounding old.
I I've been here a while too, by the way.
I guess I'm in my thirty fifth year.
Congratulations. I I just wonder, and this is a process question. We keep hearing about Toronto since 2008 having these performance standards in place. Why did it take us so long to get to this point now, so many years later?
Thank you for the question. That's a that's a very long, long potential response. We had we had some setbacks when we tried to bring this forward earlier previously. There wasn't the support to move forward at that time, so there was a delay before, you know, the city was ready to move forward. I'll leave it at that.
And who determines when they notice other municipalities, especially in Ontario? Is it the city manager? Is it is it a very professional, and this is not a slight at staff that bring forward, hey, guys, we should really look at this and press on that? Is that who who makes that determination? Because there's going to be a lot more of these things in the future, and I want to ensure we're always, you know, leading edge, not fifteen years behind.
So if I understand the question, city staff, you know, are tasked to bring forward policies driven through our official plan, various master plans, but ultimately, it's the decision of council whether to proceed or not, to delay or not.
Right, but we always base what we do on what staff recommend unless it's a council-driven report. So why did it take so long?
At previous attempts, council was not prepared to move forward.
Fair enough. My next question is, Industry Goba has made it very clear that they want to know what the final rules are going to be. And have they indicated that they're going to hold applications until they get some guidelines from the province?
Thank you for the question. I'm certainly not aware of that. Last year, when this came forward, Goba provided a letter of support to council. I I will acknowledge that they did still have concerns with the with the program and, you know, concerns about potential delay on processing of applications and review. But largely, they were supportive. So sorry, could you lost my train of thought? Could you repeat the question?
Well, they've certainly been involved in developing the standards.
Correct.
But they were not aware of, let's face it, the provincial government coming forward, saying, we're going to lay out a set of standards too. And I think that's what the game changer is, and they are fully supportive. I've spoken to Jason many times. He supports it. But industry is going, oh, wait, if the game's going to change, we're just going to hold off a few months because, as we just heard from the mayor, the minister has said, hold off, it's coming. They don't want to develop or put applications in that could be modified and cost them money at the same time as, let's face it, they're not going to just suck up the cost. They're going to put up the cost of the home. You haven't heard any of this at all? Really?
I'll I'll defer to David to see if he's had discussions with Jason on that point.
Yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, there's there's a bit more, there's some nuance to that. There's a few things that are that are at play here. We do know that the Ontario government has committed to harmonizing the Ontario Building Code with the National Building Code energy tiers. That is something that has been in the works. Industry is fully aware of that. Everyone has always been fully aware of that. And that harmonization is anticipated to occur by no later than March of 2024 next year. The most significant change to that energy tier modification will be to part nine buildings, which are smaller, low rise buildings. It's the kind of missing middle stuff that we see there with lesser changes to to part three. And those are things that we know and industry knows are coming. We're also aware, and industry is well aware as well, that there have been discussions with respect to improving energy efficiency. Currently, right now, those standards that are in the HPDS are set at 25% greater than the 2017 Ontario Building Code. So those will be still higher than what the national energy code tiers will be. But those are also things that are, again, clearly understood and known. So in terms of surprises or changes, there there has been a long signaling that there are changes in the building code that are coming, that those changes are going to be coming regardless of an interim measure. They will be happening early in the next year, and those things have been part of the discussion with respect to HPDS with industry all the way along. So certainly, the the perspective that that developers will hold applications, that is something that that we haven't heard.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So I think I think I've heard a lot of word salad here today, and it's a little frustrating because I know our staff have done a tremendous job working on this. It's just I feel we're way behind, but at the same time, we're caught in a quandary because it's a battle of the emergencies. Is it the environmental emergency or is it the housing emergency? And frankly, based on comments I've heard today and from the mayor, that the minister is saying, just hold tight a small amount of time. I feel more comfortable doing that and ensuring that housing goes forward. So I will be supporting deferral, but I also do think what we have put forward is also terrific. But but at this time, it just it's it's such a short runway. I think we are going to cost ourselves, from a housing perspective, over environmental perspective if we proceed today. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. Just before I go back to councillor Hill to wrap up on this, I'll just make a couple of quick comments and ask one question. I just want to be clear that I support the the high performance development standards, and my goal is to see them implemented. I did receive communication from the minister in a conversation that I had that the that his preference and the province's preference would be for us to wait until the summer when their guidelines are introduced before we proceed. That's not the only consideration, but it is a consideration. And just on that point, Mr. Herwire, if you could just clarify who in the ministry you heard from about that? Just so because, you know, I heard one thing, you obviously heard something else. So I just I think it would be helpful to to clarify that.
Thank you. Yes, it was a staff member in the ministry. I'd have to, I can send you the person's name if you would so like, but they were on that file, on the the energy files, so.
Right, but somebody within the
The administration, correct.
Administration of the, yeah, not in the in the political arena. That's correct. Okay. So again, I I support the high performance standards. I I intend for them to go ahead. I hope that we don't have to wait until Q1 of next year for that to happen. I'm hopeful that if we see the guidelines from the province, or even if we don't, that we can move forward as quickly as possible after after the recommendations in the motion are addressed and all the questions are answered. So that's why I will be supporting councillor Hill's motion. But it's not because I don't support the standards. It's not because I'm trying to delay or or prevent this from happening. I still want to see it happen and and will do what I can to make sure that this does happen in due course. So councillor Hill, I'll let you wrap up on this before we vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the the discussion. I appreciate the work that was done by staff. And I'll just reiterate, I know I said it in my opening, but I don't want it to get lost. Certainly, I personally am supportive of improving our green building code standards. And I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, you reinforcing that that you are as well. The intent of this is not to undermine the improved, you know, building code standards that we're going to be seeing in the city of Ottawa. The current high HDPS program, it incorporates processes that, as it is currently written, it will increase housing costs and it will slow down housing development processes. I just want to confirm perhaps from staff, do we have an estimate of the per housing unit cost that the current model looks to 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 impose on a on a new build?
Mr. Mayor, for a developer who is fully building to the minimum building code requirements and is not conducting any other passive measures with respect to energy efficiency, but is purely reliant upon a mechanical solution, those costs can be up to $10,000 per unit.
Okay, and and so that's building to the minimum standard that we would be talking about in the in the HDPS as it's written right now?
That is correct. That is why the range is anywhere between 1% to 10% of a cost. It all depends upon the level to which the builder chooses to do a purely mechanical solution. or whether they work to implement other means of providing passive energy efficiencies.
And when you speak to the 1% to 10%, sorry, could you just clarify what that means? 10%?
That's, that's what I mean, up to 10, up to $10,000 for someone who is doing a minimally code compliant.
So, so I would like to clarify, is it $10,000 per unit or 10%?
It is, it, again, it depends upon the valuation of the unit. There was a material that was circulated to council as part of that, part of that package that did provide a more fulsome cost recovery. If you'd like, we can go back and, and send that back to you. Okay.
Just because 10% to me would be on a $100,000 unit?
Said Mr., Mr. Mayor, that information was included in a fairly detailed appendix that was provided. I don't have that with me right at the second. But those cost ranges were in the order of $10,000 for someone who was doing a minimally code compliant building.
No, thank you very much. And just in terms of delay, perhaps?
Counselor Hill, I can interrupt. Mr. Mayor, on a point of order, the staff person gave the number 10,000. I'd like to know where it came from. That's what, what the mover is asking. I think if he wanted to offer that number up here at council today, he should have something to back it up.
Point of order, Mayor, I can give those numbers because I have them in front of me here. Multi-unit residential, $11,000 per unit. Townhome, 8,900 per unit. Detached home, 17,000 per unit. That was circulated to all of council.
Question, sorry, Counselor Bernard, but the question was directed to staff, so.
Sure. I'm so. With operation cost savings benefit.
Okay. Yeah, and neither, neither of the things that were just raised were technically a point of order, but.
I'll continue, Mr. Mayor. No, thank you very much. The, I guess the point I'm getting at there is there's going to be a cost increase with what's written here, but I want to speak also to the process. So I know the community energy plan certification process is a component of the existing HDPS program. Could you please speak to the, the two times that that would be incorporated in the application process for a new development and the approximate timeline that that could take for that process to happen?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, could you just repeat the first part of the question again? Apologies.
My understanding is that there is a requirement for additional certification that would be required as a part of the HDPS program. That would include a consultant that would be paid by the developer in order to get a certification of those energy standards. And then from that, that, once we receive that application, the city would then be doing its own independent consultation on the exact same process. Is that a correct understanding of that certification?
No, that is, Mr. Mayor, that is not correct. With respect to the community, the energy model, I think, is, is what you are referring to. And that is a requirement in order to meet the efficiency targets that are located within the HPDS. The applicant has the choice of three different mechanisms by which to achieve those industry targets. They can either achieve total energy equivalent units, a certain threshold of that. They can achieve 25% greater than the 2017 Ontario Building Code, or they can also go for one of the certification standards such as LEED or, or Energy Star. So there are different pathways by which they can achieve that. The third-party review process.
So I'm, I'm actually going to jump in if you don't mind, because this is, you're, this is meant to be your wrap-up, Counselor Hill, not another round of questions of staff, so I.
No, that's.
I'm going to cut it off there, and I, I didn't realize you were planning to do a, a series of multiple questions with staff. I think the, the point here is to wrap up your, your arguments, and then we'll vote.
The, the point I'm trying to make is there's additional certification that this is requiring.
But if you, if you want to make the point, you can make the point. I, I, we just, I don't think this is the place for questions for staff.
Understood, Mr. Mayor. So there will be an increase in cost. There will be an increase in process. And to be clear, and, you know, to be clear, what we've seen in the last, you know, 20 years is a fairly substantive improvement in the overall building quality that we've seen in structures. We've heard earlier today that 45% of emissions come from our structures. But that includes the Canada Wave Pool, that includes the Walter Baker facility, that includes buildings that were built in the 70s and the 80s. If you look at our new developments, if you take our ZB site, for example, that's a site that's been built. It's got sewage waste to energy, and this isn't because of an imposed new government regulation. This is because industry is moving in this direction, and we can harmonize with that through our high, high-performance development standards that we would do in concert with provincial green standards. I just wanted to highlight that because it's not a fair statement to say that we're not moving into the direction of having greener building code standards. We are, and we can continue to do that, and my argument is, if we wait a few months, we can do this in concert with the province. And this is not a significant wait, given the amount of time that we've, that we've been looking at this problem. I do appreciate the effort and time that the, that staff has put into, to doing this, and I do envision that in due course, we're going to be seeing some form of this, this program being implemented. It's just, it makes sense to me that we would do this once as a collaborative provincial municipal entity that's, that's looking to, to run this in a, in a concerted way, as opposed to the municipal government moving ahead of the province. So, Mr. Mayor, I would encourage, you know, as my grade 11 shop teacher said, we probably want to measure twice and cut once. And I think that's an appropriate way to look at this because we're only looking at a few months of difference. And, and I would encourage that, that we take our time to get this right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. All right, let's vote then on the deferral motion, please.
Counselor Tierney.
Yes.
Counselor Darus.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
No.
Counselor Menard.
No.
Counselor Hubley. Counselor Bradley.
No.
Counselor King.
No.
Conseil plant.
Yes.
Counselor Troster.
No.
Counselor Kits.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
No.
Counselor Dudas.
Yes.
Counselor Carr. Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Darush. Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Luloff.
We.
Counselor Leeper.
No.
Counselor Curry.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Brockington.
No.
Counselor Kavanaugh.
No.
Counselor Gower.
No.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
Yes.
14 yeas, 10 nays.
Okay, motion is carried. Let's move to item 13.2, which is the Ottawa Nightlife Economy Action Plan, and Counselor Troster, you, as mentioned earlier, you have a motion.
I do. Thank you so much, Mayor. Can we put the motion up on the screen? Is that possible? So this is an amendment to the nightlife economy action plan. So whereas the nightlife economy action plan has identified the need for new mid-sized performing arts venues in Ottawa through extensive consultation with industry professionals, including local independent talent buyers and promoters, whereas members of the independent local industry have raised concern about the lack of financially accessible venues in Ottawa. And whereas recommendation 10 of the nightlife economy action plan includes opportunities to support the development of a new, of new mid-sized venues, 1,500 to 2,000 person capacity. And whereas recommendation four of the nightlife economy action plan seeks to establish a nightlife ambassador council that will guide recommendations six through 10. Therefore, be it resolved that the following changes be made to the nightlife economy action plan. Under recommendation four priority actions, replace select nightlife ambassador council members that represent nightlife businesses, key organizations, and residents with select nightlife ambassador council members that represent Ottawa's independent music industry, nightlife businesses, key organizations, and residents. And under recommendation 10 priority actions, add ensure any new spaces developed promote the importance of being financially accessible to independent Ottawa-based promoters and talent buyers. So I don't need to tell you, we've lost a lot of small venues in Ottawa, specifically in my ward and in Counselor Plant's ward, Mercury Lounge, Zafod's, Barry Moore's, Babylon is now a dollar store. So I do think it's really exciting to have this nightlife economy action plan. It's a step in the right direction where I'm excited to, to support the spirit of the plan. But we want to protect that we protect, we want to ensure that we protect the independent promoters and venues that have been here for decades and where a lot of artists get their start. So independent stages like Live on Algan, House of Targ, and The Brass Monkey are where many artists have honed their skills. And they'd like to move up to a bigger venue. We want to make sure that that's accessible to them. Not only do independent venues and promoters provide huge cultural benefits to the city, but the economic case is very clear. A study by the Chicago Loop Academy found that for every dollar spent on a ticket for a show at an independent venue, $12 in local economic activity is created. So this amendment is simply intended to ensure that independent and smaller music promoters get a chance to benefit from our investment in, in our nightlife, and to ensure that if city money goes towards building a mid-sized venue or any tax breaks or other incentives, that these performers get a chance to take the stage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Troster. Counselor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. This is regarding the.
Yeah, this, you can speak to either the motion or the nightlife economy action plan itself.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern is, is youth engagement. A lot of this activity and the whole focus is tourism and, and making money, which is, you know, something that has to be done. But I am concerned about youth. There is very few activities for youth, as we've seen in unsanctioned events that are popping up in places like Britannia and even Moonee's Bay. It's, it's, there's a gap. There's, there's an, there's something that we need to do in terms of offering more for, for youth. We need non-alcoholic events. We need things that go into the night. And this is something that I'm concerned about for both youth and families. There are things in Montreal such as the night ride that they have. They have a bicycle ride at night. Everyone wears tons of lights and goes, goes around. I want to make sure that families are included and youth have a role. Right now, I've had discussions with Boys and Girls Club, well, BG Ottawa, as it's called now. And they would love to do more events at night, but their funding is very limited. And this is when youth want to play basketball, want to do things. We need to have that focus. We need to look at keeping youth with activities at night because that's when they're ready to do things. And I'm, I'm very concerned. I just got some reports just as, during the meeting about vandalism at night. These things happen because you've got a lot of bored people around, and we're not looking at the issue at all. We're, we're focusing on, on, on the, the financial side, the economic side, and, and it has its place. But if we don't do something with our growing youth population, we're, we're, we're going to have more problems. We need to look at this as, as a preventative, as a positive. And so I'm asking that this be a focus of our plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. Conseil plant.
Yeah, thank you so much. I listened very intently to the discussion around the nightlife economy. Obviously, this affects my ward to a very large extent. But I just want to reiterate what I said in committee today, which is the nightlife economy could not be sustained without a lot of frontline essential workers, whether that be waitresses, women who work in retail, people who work in hotels, police officers, ambulances, nurses. And I really hope that as we look at a nightlife strategy, we consider them in these discussions, and something like a 24-hour daycare would be really helpful in helping them keep some sort of work-life balance because we know that, you know, they have personal lives as well, and helping them achieve their full potential would be really helpful, and I appreciate very much this report. Thank you so much.
Merci Conseil plant. Counselor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions to staff, if I may. Did the original motion already incorporate what is now being proposed with the Troster motion, or was the Troster motion necessary to ensure that this industry in particular is, is covered off by, by name by actually naming this?
I've asked Ms. Van Busker to come up to the podium to respond.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the question. The, the motion before you from Counselor Troster, I think, is really, it's, it's well-framed to ensure that any investment that's made in mid-sized venues creates the opportunity for local independent artists to access those facilities. I think it's important to understand that a private sector developer of a venue will have a business pro forma and will have an approach to business, and certainly, the city may be able to communicate certain preferences. However, if the city was to embark on some form of partnership with a developer on a mid-sized venue in a city asset or on city property, clearly, as was stated by Counselor Troster, there would be opportunity for us to potentially leverage our desires in that regard to a greater degree.
So I think the answer is yes. That staff believe this provides greater clarity as far as the intentions and, and embrace it. And I, my next question was, are we missing anyone else? Are we missing any other group that could be included with this new nightlife action plan that we want to ensure is not left out? Because I would hope that the staff motion before us is all-encompassing, that it is not exclusive of anyone. Obviously, we want to promote and amplify and give more opportunities to the entire industry as a whole. And that's why when I saw my colleague's motion, I thought, okay, is it really necessary? You're basically saying, yes, it provides that greater clarity. I want to make sure that no one else that should be identified as being left out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It certainly is not the intention of staff to exclude any group from participating in the implementation of the nightlife economy action plan. We are not opposed, staff is not opposed to the counselor's motion. Clearly, the music industry is a vital stakeholder in the implementation of the nightlife economy action plan, and frankly, would be at the table anyway as part of the ambassador council that will be developed by the nightlife commissioner office in, in due course in 2024. But the principles of inclusivity and diversity and opportunity are well embedded in the action plan, and the counselor should feel comfortable that staff is well aware of this.
Thank you. At committee, staff confirmed that adopting the recommendation before us, the, the staff recommendation, does not commit the city to a financial contribution to a small venue, and I just want to confirm at this stage that is still correct.
That is correct.
Okay. My last point, Mayor, is the part three of the motion, of the staff motion, says that a report comes back to Fedco about the outcomes of the action plan by the end of Q4 2026. That is the end of the term of this council, and I want to make sure that we receive this report while this council is still serving its mandate. That is, it doesn't come after this term of council ends. Can I receive a commitment from staff that we will receive that report before this term of council ends?
Yes, it is our intent to bring that report forward during this term of council and as well as an interim report at the end of 2024 to advise on our progress to date.
Perfect. Thanks very much. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Brockington. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. I'm going to do the thing that you're not supposed to do and ask a question I don't know the answer to, but I actually don't know the answer to this. I believe there was a, like, an arts and culture strategy that we also had that sort of lapsed a while back, and I, and I want to understand how this nightlife economy action plan relates to, you know, our ongoing interest and investments in the arts and culture sector, sector, pardon me.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. There has been a lot of tremendous work done with our colleagues in RCFS related to arts and culture, including an arts and culture strategy, which I'm not equipped to speak to directly, and perhaps Mr. Chenier would, would care to speak to. I will say, though, that our colleagues in RCFS were engaged throughout the entire process of developing the nightlife action economy plan, and that we're certainly not working in isolation from any work that may be going on with our culture colleagues in RCFS.
Mr. Mayor, I can add to that, just amplify what was said. We do, we do support what is before you today. There was the music strategy that, that ran for three years and, and did wrap up a, a summary of, of the accomplishments was provided to members of council some time ago. Happy to recirculate it if, if that is of interest. Happy to recirculate it if if that is of interest. And we did look to to the future at a time pre-pandemic and then realized the the impact of the the last two and a half, three years on on the entertainment industry, the music industry specifically. And so the culture staff are doing an environmental scan right now to both identify state of the entertainment industry, but also to look at the venues that that exist and doing an inventory of current venues and how they're meeting the current post-pandemic needs. So all that will feed into some of the future work that this calls for. And and I think is a nice blend of of the work that's going to be done and the work that the culture group is doing.
Okay, so it's it's the impression of staff that this doesn't duplicate or replicate efforts that are ongoing elsewhere in the organization.
Mr. Mayor, it does not duplicate the work that the cultural group is doing with respect to the post-music strategy and some of the look-forward work that we're doing, which is really going towards a renewal of a Culture 2.0, for lack of a better word, which would build on the Arts and Heritage policy that council approved many years ago.
Okay, yes, because, you know, the Arts and Heritage Culture Policy world extends far beyond the more downtown wards. And so I'm not really, I want to be sure that we're not voting to support something that will end up drawing from or absorbing resources that could be applied across the city more broadly, even though I understand the market is, you know, a great tourism industry and so on and so forth. I just want to understand what we're voting on today. And how much is this plan going to cost, this this nighttime economy action plan? What are the resources allocated to this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Nightlife Economy Action Plan contains 10 recommendations. The first three recommendations are for implementation in 2023 within existing staff and budgetary resources. And with the development and implementation of the Nightlife Commissioner Office in 2024, recommendations four through 10 will be handled through the Nightlife Commissioner Office. There is currently no budget attached to any of those actions. Many of them are advocacy-related, working cooperatively with partners, pulling together information and and partners and stakeholders around tables to sort of move forward in a coordinated way. In the event there were any budget implications on a go-forward, they would come through the normal budget process, annual budget process, or accommodated within the existing economic development budget envelope.
And I and I wonder, then, you know, what 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 in the in the governance structure of it all, the the nighttime commissioner, what if they make recommendations that have implications across other committees? Because I know when we were at the Community and Social Services Committee Budget Meeting or Budget 2023 Meeting, we had, I don't know if it was 25 delegations from business owners in the market area that were all crying out for supports for housing in the opioid crisis. So as much as I imagine that, you know, governmental intervention here from the top down is going to solve for XYZ, I want to understand that if the if the pain points for why people want don't want to go to the market, which are related to safety and perceive safety and security, if if those are are going to be addressed, does the Nightlife Commissioner have the opportunity to to make suggestions for future budgetary commitments?
In 2023, we'll develop the the framework of responsibility and and sort of the, we'll sort of stand up and outline for the office in 2023 for implementation in 2024. As it's presently conceived, the Nightlife Commissioner Office will be a business line of Economic Development Services under the leadership of Planning Real Estate and Economic Development. So it's an internal office. It is not external to the city. So clearly, the opportunity to engage with, you know, cross-departmentally, as well as with external partners, would be very similar to the posture we have already in Economic Development Services. One of the key deliverables in the action plan is the development of a safety and security program working in collaboration with OPS, OPH, nightlife, security experts and and other stakeholders, so to speak, specifically to your point around dealing with some root causes and barriers to people engaging in a positive way with the nightlife. Those are the types of things that the Nightlife Commissioner Office will will tackle once it is properly stood up.
Okay, so I just want to clarify then, will there be partnerships with agencies that aren't looking to police out the type of people that will create safety issues? Because I've just heard OPS, and I appreciate that they have a role here to play with security. But I think the larger policy questions are how we are going to support people who are in crisis instead of making sure that they just exit the market.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. This is not just a market initiative. The Nightlife Economy Action Plan is citywide, and we're looking at developing the nightlife in a positive constructive way across the entire city, rural, suburban, and central area. My note and comment about the Safety and Security Plan isn't about an enforcement strategy. It's about creating an environment where people who work at night, experience the night, and manage the night can coexist in a in a safe and responsible way. Clearly, we wouldn't stand up a table around developing that strategy without engaging with our Emergency and Protective Services Department and with OPS, but also with OPH and and others to try and deal constructively with those barriers that you are identifying.
Okay, thank you. So I mean, I I I still think I still think it's kind of an interesting idea. I appreciate that other cities do this. And so, you know, I'll I'll support the 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 framework. I am interested in understanding how it's going to be resourced and whether or not there's going to be stress on current staff pressures within cred, because cred sure holds a lot of cards right now. And I want to make sure that it's realistic for everyone. But without a doubt, if this does not include appropriate supports and an actual vision for eradicating chronic homelessness in the Byward Market, but across the city, supportive housing and housing affordability, I don't believe this will work. So I I don't want to see this happen in in isolation, and I'll be bringing that forward again in future years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Brown.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. I can say I was lying awake at night last night in bed, thinking about the nightmare position. And my question was already asked and answered by my colleague. And staff have indicated they don't have a full costing for the role or the office that's to be created. But perhaps they have information as to what other jurisdictions pay for the role in the office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the question. I can't speak specifically to how other jurisdictions are currently paying for this position as we work through the next six months and establishing that that framework. We will have more information in that regard, but would not want to speculate on what that number looks like today. But to be clear, we are looking to fund one full-time position. So we use Nightlife Commissioner Office, but we are funding one position.
And I can appreciate that. Thank you very much for the answer. I think we absolutely have a role as a city in this. I'm supportive of the plan overall, but I don't think hiring another bureaucrat is the best way to do it. I think private industry and business are best positioned to continue their advocacy efforts without having to create this role. So I'll support the plan, Your Worship, but at the end of the day, I think it's incumbent on industry to work with us on reducing barriers, cutting red tape, and creating the favorable conditions for business to do what they do best, and that's grow the economy. But certainly, I think Ottawa is only big enough for one mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Leaper.
Thank you very much. I'm excited that this is moving forward. There is a an important role to be played by a bureaucrat in our nightlife. As Matt and I can attest from some of our experience around music over the last two terms of council, there's a lot of help that the industry needs from the city bureaucracy. And I'm thinking about some of the phone calls we fielded around helping navigate noise issues, helping to navigate festival garbage issues, helping to navigate zoning issues, helping to navigate sometimes with with police and and issues around policing and and overpolicing the noise complaints. I'm I'm really pleased that the music strategy is going to be succeeded by a broader nightlife strategy, something that takes into account that, you know, the entertainment at night goes beyond just music. There's food, there's festivals, there's theater. There's a lot of things that we could be encouraging to help people enjoy their nighttimes in the city and right across the city. I've noticed that some of the discussion around the nightlife strategy has tended to focus on Byward Market, and I think a lot of our thoughts go there. But if we take a look at some of the successes of the music strategy, you know, your BIAs were hosting concerts in in the local spaces and making use of non-traditional music venues. There's a lot of great things that we can do for certainly music on an ongoing basis, but more than music as well. And a nightlife strategy and putting in place a nightlife commissioner, I think, can help us sort through the issues that are inevitably going to arise. I I know there's a lot of discussion around security in the 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 security plan that the Nightlife Commissioner is going to come up with. There are things that go well beyond just sort of policing the market that we need to take into account. I think one of the successes of the music strategy, for example, was baking in sexual assault training for festival volunteers at festivals. And we can certainly broaden that even further. So all of this is really exciting. And even if you've never been to the market for nightlife, I think you should be excited about this plan because I think it's going to make for a more vibrant Bar Haven, a more vibrant Orleans, a more vibrant Westboro and Kitchi Sippy Ward. I will just note, one of the big successes, I think, of the music strategy was that the we successfully achieved a Capital Music Awards. And I just want to note that on June 1st, at the Bronson Center, the Capital Music Awards will be held. And for Album of the Year, Pony Girl, Amanda Reom, Yao, Alana Sterling, Angelique Francis, and Fatal Vision will be competing for that prize. So we've got some amazing talent in this city. The music strategy has helped to foster them and helped to promote them. And I think the nightlife strategy is going to do even more for them. And Amanda, I hope you win that one. Mayor, thank you very much. I'm going to wholeheartedly support this strategy.
Thank you, Counselor Leaper. Counselor Divine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the the questions that my colleague, Counselor Johnson, was asking with regards to the nightlife economy and its impact on and incorporation of the arts and culture sector. So just to follow up a little bit on what Counselor Leaper was also saying, I'm very excited about the prospects that this plan can bring to the vibrancy of the city and changing the way in which our residents interact with and see and define their city. So having been a, I was and hope to still continue one day to be a practicing member of the nonprofit performing arts sector, which has always played a vital role in contributing to the vibrancy of a city. But what I also, so from having grown up in Montreal and spent time in Vancouver, those cities both had vibrant nighttime arts and culture sectors. And in very specific instances in Vancouver, when they had the Olympics, I can't remember exactly when, and in Ottawa in 2017, when we had the 150th anniversary celebration, there were specifically targeted funding opportunities for the nonprofit art sector to access, to be able to animate those special conditions. Because one thing about the nonprofit art sector that relies very heavily on public sector project grants to do stuff during the regular business hours, if we, if that, if the nonprofit art sector is being asked to animate 24/7, which they can, they can only do so if there is new funding for them to be to access, because otherwise they're being compromised in every other aspect. And so seeing as how the goal for the city is to broaden cultural programming by investing in it and not necessarily putting additional pressures on the current amounts of project funding. My question is, for the successful implementation of this program, and if knowing that having the arts play a vital role in it is key to its success, is there the opportunity now or in the 2024 budget to designate specifically targeted project funding from the city so that our nonprofit performing arts sector can be an active and paid proponent of this strategy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the for the question. As you pointed out, there there currently isn't any funding contemplated for a separate funding stream for arts and culture partners to to access. Our colleagues in RCFS run several grant funding programs. And and I would say that the types of organizations that are eligible and receive that funding on an annual basis certainly utilize those funds during the day as as well as in the evening. But the idea of developing a separate stream for, excuse me, new new product, new opportunities, artists that may focus more exclusively on activities that would fall within the framework of nightlife is an interesting idea. It is not currently in the strategy, but certainly something that we can take away and and discuss with our colleagues in RCFS to see where funds could be found to activate a program like that on a go-forward.
Can I ask the follow-up? If it was not, if 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 it's not part of the plan now, and so I'm going to assume that the strategy would love to see people going to festivals, you know, way past normal hours, or, oh, my gosh, a play happening in a bakery at 3:00 in the morning, I'll go see that. And I can assume that the city would like those to be professionally paid people doing that as because those will be our residents contributing to this economy we want to support. If that kind of specially targeted funding was not contemplated before, was that because it was just, and I'll completely understand it, oh, we didn't think of that? Or it's that we cannot afford to do this and will not do this right now, but maybe later? Because it will help.
Mr. Mayor, part of it is that it wasn't contemplated specifically at the time, although there is nothing in our guidelines that, at least as I'm just thinking about it in general, that would prevent a festival or an organization from focusing on the nightlife aspect of this. Because the cultural staff are working with economic development on this, I think this will become a a a focus for the next few years. There is an opportunity, as I as I mentioned previously, we are working on a new cultural plan, which no doubt will now think of this as 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 one of the pillars of the things that we want to accomplish. We are also about to start looking at our cultural funding policy as well, which, again, because this is a theme that exists now but didn't several years ago when we did this. And certainly, most of our cultural funding, especially the project funding, is jury and and really looks at what the community needs are and 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 what groups are looking to do. So I think if that starts to be reflected in the applications that come forward, that we can make some headways under the existing policy. And we can certainly take away as as part of the cultural plan and the review of funding, making sure that the nightlife aspect to this is is well-reflected in future iterations.
Thank you. And I do understand that any of our nonprofit arts companies could apply for a project grant today. And there's nothing in the guideline that says you can't do your show after midnight. I know that. And so they can certainly apply to what is currently available. But this is like, we're we're looking at stimulating a new economy. And just as any industry would do, it would put stimulus funding in there to properly stimulate that economy. And I'm only offering the suggestion that if you want to get the most out of it from your arts and culture sector, you don't want to force them into a choice of, well, I can only apply for two project grants per year. I'm not going to take a risk on my one grand to do a 3:00 PM show. But if they offered me more money, heck, I'll do it. So I hope that that it can be contemplated for a future funding cycles because it will, I guarantee you, it will lead to the success of the of of your goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Divine. So let's vote first on Counselor Troster's motion and then on the on the recommendation from the committee. Carrie, okay, and on the recommendation from the committee. Thank you, everyone. Let's move to item 18 on the agenda. There are no in-camera items. Item 19, disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority. Is that received? Item 20, motion to adopt reports. Counselor Minard.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, that the report from Agricultural and Rural Affairs Report 3, Built Heritage Committee Report 5, Environment and Climate Committee Change Committee Report 3A, Financing Corporate Services Committee Report 4, Light Rail Subcommittee Report 3, Planning and Housing Committee Report 8, Transportation Committee Report 5, the report from the City Clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act, explanation requirements at the City Council Meeting of April 26, 2023, be received and adopted as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Minard. Is that carried?
Right.
Number 21, motions of which notice has previously been given. 21.1 is the motion by Counselor 21.1 is the motion by councillor Tierney, seconded by me regarding Ottawa race weekend. Is that carried? Item 21.2 is the motion from councillor Luloff, seconded by councillor Dudas regarding Petrie Island Canoe Club. Is that carried? Uh, motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Uh, councillor Troster has a motion regarding International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia and Transphobia, uh, seconded by me, and we're suspending the rules because that day is before our next council meeting. So uh, on suspension of the rules, is that carried?
Carried.
Councillor Troster.
Thank you very much. Um, I don't think I really, I can read the motion if you'd like me to, but I can also just explain what it's about. This is to declare uh, May 17th um, in the city of Ottawa, the International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia and Transphobia. Um, I'm pleased to bring forward the motion in my newly revised liaison role capacity that includes the 2S LGBTQ plus community. Uh, May 17th was chosen to commemorate the World Health Organization's decision, if you can believe it or not, to declassify homosexuality as a mental disorder in 1990, which was not that long ago. It's celebrated in over 130 countries, including 37 where being um, someone like me is illegal, um, including many countries like Ghana and like Uganda, um, where I have dear friends who are from those countries who have come to Canada to seek asylum. Uh, it's important to name the ongoing violence that members of the 2S LGBTQ plus community experience every day. And as many of you may know, attacks against our community have been increasing, whether it's at a storytime in the library or at a school board meeting. So this is an opportunity for us to affirm our commitment to equality and to justice for the 2S LGBTQ community. I don't think I need to actually read the motion unless folks would like me to.
No, that's fine. Is the motion carried? Thank you councillor Troster. Councillor Kavanaugh has a motion seconded by councillor King regarding bill 98. Um, and uh, it is a, a time sensitive because it is moving its way through the Ontario Legislature. Um, so on suspension of the rules, is that carried? Councillor Kavanaugh?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate uh, the consultation I've had with uh, with the city staff on this. Um, I'm going to read the motion because uh, I think we were probably not aware of this. Um, whereas the government of Ontario has put forward bill 98, the Better Schools and Outcomes Act, which includes a section in schedule two on the disposal of surplus school properties. And whereas schools are fundamental part of the fabric of a community, serving not only to educate children, but as a center for after-school community activities, meeting places, providing green space and sports fields, including outdoor community ranks, et cetera. Whereas the current provincial procedure for a school board to dispose of a closed school is to offer it to its co-terminist school board, then to municipality, then to the provincial government, and then to the federal government before selling it on the open market. Whereas the city of Ottawa, in recognition of the importance of retaining a community facility within a neighborhood, considers these opportunities and has from time to time purchased such schools in the past, particularly for the opportunity to keep green space and our public meeting space in community as well as housing. Whereas bill 98, Better Schools and Outcome Act, contains a provision where the Minister of Education may direct a school board to sell, lease or otherwise dispose of a school's site or property of the board ahead of offering it to municipalities if the property is not needed to meet current or future pupil accommodation needs of the board. Whereas this provision would eliminate the ability of the municipality to obtain a closed school site to meet community new needs. Therefore, be resolved that the city of Ottawa indicate to the Minister of Education and to the Ontario Legislature its interest in having municipalities retain the ability to uh, obtain a, a closed school site before it goes on the open market. And further resolve that the Ottawa area MPPs and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario be informed of the city's position in this regard. Um, and as you're aware, we were not consulted on this, but uh, this is very important for us to, to keep this. This is part of communities, especially on inner urban areas where if a school closes, um, this is very valuable space that um, fits very much into our official plan of uh, using for green space and possibly even affordable housing. So um, and I want to thank my uh, my colleague councillor King for seconding this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my two colleagues for putting this motion on the floor. I think um, this is a lot more serious than what I think many of us uh, have, have thought about uh, so far. The provincial regulation that governs the disposal of school sites is uh, regulation 444-98. And as our colleague just stated, there is a, a triage system in place where the school board that wants to unload the site has to go through this process where it offers it to the other local school boards and then other government, levels of government within the, the municipality. And once and only once that they write back to you and say, we do not want this site, are you then permitted to go out onto the open market and sell the, the uh, school, the building and or land? And um, as a former school trustee, I can tell you that the public is very concerned when a school closes and the site is deemed surplus to its needs because they would like to see a public asset remain in public hands. That there are uh, many different uses that, that public facility could be used for. And the public wants to make sure that all levels of government at least have an equal opportunity to review their needs before they say, no, thank you. And what this bill does, it takes municipalities out of that equation. And I can cite examples within my own ward where we've used closed facilities for community use before a final decision was made and put to good use in that regard. So um, I support the motion before us. I do think municipalities still need an opportunity to consider uh, acquiring a surplus site. If it doesn't, then at least we've had that opportunity and it can then go on the open market. But I do think um, that we need to speak up and let the province know where we stand on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brockington. Councillor De Rush.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I certainly appreciate the intent here. I won't be supporting it. Um, I've seen several files like this, but under the old, or the present policy where um, there's been considerable political pressure put on the city to acquire um, these surplus properties. And um, you know, the, the, it is disruptive, I think, to our kind of recreational and park planning process because these are usually not funded. And at the end of the day, we have all said we want to, uh, to prioritize um, housing and housing development. And uh, you know, I see one particular site and, and uh, on Riverside Drive, and it's, it's certainly, I'm sure not the, my, my colleague wasn't there at the time when we acquired it, but it's taken some time to, to develop it because there is usually not a community consensus. They want to keep it as green space. And uh, you know, we're really put in a tough political situation there. And again, um, I guess that's what we're paid to do, to make those tough political decisions. But um, I think um, at the end of the day, we don't see um, the kind of maximization of housing that we need to see on these sites because the pressure is to preserve um, um, you know, things that really we don't have a budget for to, to acquire and maintain from a recreational point of view. So I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor De Rush. Councillor Curry.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have a few questions. I mean, honestly, my memory of the school board is that if a site wanted to be disposed of, it was offered to other school boards for a dollar. But when it's offered to, so the school boards all say no, and then if it comes to the city, it's not for a dollar, right? It's at fair market value?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's disposed of at fair market value.
We would, so the city would have to buy it at fair market value from the school board?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm honestly trying to wrap my head around why the province is doing this. I mean, they're, they're trying to keep education money and education, I guess. I mean, you think about, we sold a site for $21 million once and it was huge. Then we were able to build more schools. We sold another site for 150,000 bucks, which was like nothing for a seven-acre school, elementary school. I mean, it was pathetic. What do we do with that? Nothing. So I just, what is the province trying to do here that I understand? I understand what councillor Kavanaugh is trying to say here, that we would want it for green space, potentially building, we want to have a say. But if we were to uh, be offered it still, we still have to buy it for a lot of money. We just want to be able to make sure we have that option. Instead of a private developer getting it, but potentially paying a lot more and giving the school board more money to work with to build more schools. You know, I don't, this isn't as simple as it seems, I don't think. I can understand from our perspective, I'm not on the school board anymore, I'm here now. You know, I, I understand what we're trying to do here, how my alliances and allegiances. Oh, which way shall I go? But I understand, I just try to figure out what the province is trying to do. This, if we were still be able, if we were able to take the sites, we would just get them potentially for less money. The school board would get less money, but right now we're cut out of it entirely. So we want to at least say we don't want to be cut out of it entirely. Okay, that's fine. Let's say that.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else? No? Okay. Um, so on councillor Kavanaugh's motion.
Uh, carried.
Sent.
The sound.
Thank you. Dissent from councillor De Ruz and councillor De Rush. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move to notices of motion. Conseilleur Plante.
Oui, merci monsieur le maire. Attendsu que en 2022 a commémorer le 25e anniversaire retraite.
Whereas 2020, in 2022, was the 25th anniversary of Retraite en Action. It is based out of Petro Ottawa at 40 Corbin Street, on land belonging to the city of Ottawa. Retraite en Action celebrated its anniversary all year long by encouraging retirees and seniors to join various activities at the Petro. In order to leave a permanent tribute to its presence at Petro d'Atawa, Retraite en Action chose to plant a tree and install a commemorative plaque on the land for posterity sake. Whereas the costs of the tree planted in fall 2022 will be paid by Retraite en Action. Whereas Retraite en Action planned to hold an event at 40 Corbett Street to officially celebrate this commemoration in spring 2023. Be it resolved that the city council approved the installation of a plaque at 40 Corbett Street, on land belonging to the city of Ottawa, to celebrate the 25th anniversary of Retraite en Action. Be it further resolved that the plaque reads Retraite en Action, 25th Anniversary, 1997, 2022, in both official languages. Thank you very much for conseiller Kavanaugh for supporting this motion. Conseiller Dudas?
Whereas the participation rates of Canadians engaging in healthy physical activities has declined, while inactivity and obesity continues to rise in Canada, whereas health and fitness ought to be promoted and embraced by Canadians of all ages and abilities. Whereas many Canadian cities have taken up the annual challenge of encouraging promotional physical activity. Whereas the city of Ottawa offers a multitude of recreation and leisure programming and promotes active and healthy living through a number of in- initiatives. Whereas the city has provide, previously offered an incentive to residents to embrace physical activity and fitness by providing two-for-one public swimming at city-operated swimming pools and two-for-one admission at city-operated weight and cardio rooms in recognition of past National Health and Fitness Days. Whereas OPH has indicated that staying active is a positive coping strategy to taking care of your mental health. And whereas the city departments, Ottawa Public Health, Recreation, Cultural Facilities Services Department and others work together on improving access to and encouraging physical activity for residents, whereas offering incentive to residents to embrace physical activity and fitness by offering two-for-one public swimming and two-for-one uh, access to weight and cardio rooms as well as free virtual Zumba classes on Saturday, June 3rd, 2023 in recognition of 2023 National Health and Fitness Day. Therefore, be resolved that city council declare Saturday, June 3rd, 2023 to be National Health and Fitness Day in Ottawa. Be it further resolved that city council approve that the city offer two-for-one public swimming at city-operated swimming pools and two-for-one admission at city-operated weight and cardio rooms as well as a free virtual Zumba class on Saturday, June 3rd, 2023 in recognition of National Health and Fitness Day.
Thank you councillor Dudas. Councillor Troster.
This is just a motion for us to close Somerset Street for the Chinatown Night Market. Would people like me to read it or can we just? Well, it's a notice.
We're not, we're not voting. We're not voting. It's a notice of motion. So please go ahead and read it.
Okay. Whereas the Ottawa Chinatown Business Improvement Area will host the annual, annual Ottawa Chinatown Night Market. And whereas many of the night market activities will be happening outdoors on Somerset Street, Somerset Street West between Bronson Avenue and Emperor Street. Activities consist of multicultural performances and cultural food vendors. And whereas the BIA has requested the closure of Somerset Street West from Bronson Avenue and Emperor Street. The road closure will begin at 8pm on Thursday, June 1st, 2023 and end at 5am on Monday, June 5th, 2023. And whereas the city of Ottawa's Special Events on City Streets Bylaw 2001-260 prohibits road closures before 6pm Monday to Friday. Therefore, be it resolved that council approved the road closure for Somerset, Somerset Street West from Bronson Avenue and Emperor Street. The road closure will begin at 8pm on Thursday, the 1st of June and end at 5am on Monday, the 5th of June for the Ottawa Chinatown Night Market, providing it meets the requirements, conditions and approval of the Special Events Advisory Team. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Troster. Councillor Hughley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a motion from myself and councillor Brown. Uh, and it's whereas the city of Ottawa has declared a climate and housing emergency. And whereas the city of Ottawa is dealing with an expiring landfill. And whereas the residents of our city produce an estimated 317,000 tons of garbage a year currently. And whereas cities around the world, across our country, and even just outside our own municipal boundary, have chosen to divert waste from landfill. And many of these cities are currently using various technologies such as, but not limited to, incineration and other waste diversion methods that convert waste to energy. And whereas it is prudent for the city of Ottawa to address the long-term solid waste needs of our city that both benefit residents, taxpayers and the environment. And whereas uh, there are numerous examples of modern, efficient and environmentally friendly waste-to-energy technologies which reduce pollutants and which generate heat and electricity. Therefore, be it resolved that staff undertake an immediate review of the technologies which are available and in active operation for diverting waste from landfill, which meets or exceeds current applicable environmental regulations and requirements. And be it further resolved that staff conduct a request for interest to determine which companies would be interested in partnering with the city of Ottawa to test and prove the benefits of their concepts. And finally, be it further resolved that staff give preference to the potential solutions that could provide heat and/or electricity to be used to make housing more affordable for our residents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hughley. I don't believe there are any other notices of motion. Item 24 is the motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor Menard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Is that carried? Thank you. Uh, confirmation bylaw councillor Menard.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of May 10th, 2023.
Is that carried? Thank you. Uh, any inquiries? All right, adjournment, motion councillor Menard.